All right. All right, it is 5:01 PM on Monday, July 15, 2024. This is a regular board meeting for the Monroe School District. Present are myself, Director Campbell, Director Barnes, Director Ed Scorn, and President Bumpus, and Director Whitfield is absent this evening. Superintendent Sean Woodward, district leadership team, school district staff, as well as members of the community, Director Whitfield will not be in attendance tonight. Members of the public can log into the regular board meeting using the Zoom link attached to tonight's agenda that is found on the Board Docs website. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's meeting, we're happy to have you join us. All comments during tonight's meeting are audio recorded and will be available online on our website. This is in addition to the written minutes. Please understand that while it may appear the board is moving quickly on important matters, there have been previous discussions on these issues either in earlier meetings or in board workshops, which are also open public meetings. Each director has had ample time to study the issues, ask appropriate questions, and obtain satisfactory answers from the superintendent, his staff, or through outside research. Those wishing to address the board during public comments must turn in a public comment form prior to the start of the meeting at 5 o'clock PM. Any form submitted after the meeting has started will be held for the next meeting to address the board at that time. Reviewing the agenda, there are no additions or modifications to tonight's agenda. And so, moving on to... Oh, we do have... We have one change, well, I'll just hand it back over to our president now.
Hello.
I was just pinch hitting for you.
Director Campbell, you just do such a great job, though. Really enjoy it. There was one change to tonight's agenda, the HR report was updated, and the new updated version was attached to the agenda this morning. Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the agenda dated July 15, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. That... Okay. That the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the agenda dated July 15, 2024. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed four to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item 2.01, consideration of donations. Director Barnes?
Okay, we have a lot of donations here. So first, we have Brookdale and Monroe. Lisa Caldwell is donating to Monroe School District a monetary grant in the amount of $200 for the Sole and Express Purpose of Student Cost to Attend Summer Yearbook Camp for the Monroe High School Yearbook. That's incredibly generous and amazing. We have Johansson Mechanical, which is donating to Monroe School District a monetary grant in the amount of $400 for the Sole and Express Purpose of Student Cost to Attend Summer Yearbook Camp for the Monroe High School Yearbook. Yep, and Johansson Mechanical again donating a monetary grant in the amount of $300 for the Sole and Express Purpose of PLC Conference T-shirts. Ooh, that's really cool. Evergreen Speedway is donating a monetary grant in the amount of $250 for the Sole and Express Purpose to provide more T-shirts for staff that are attending the PLC Conference. This is really cool, they're all gonna be matching. I like it, okay. And then we also have Bearcat Pride that's donating a monetary grant in the amount of $500 for the Sole and Express Purpose for Principal Willie to use as he see fits. It's a principal fund. That's really cool, I'm interested to see how he will use that. Bearcat Pride is also donating a monetary grant in the amount of $1,000 for the Sole and Express Purpose to help Mrs. Hudson's yearbook class with funds for the three-day workshop summer camp. It sounds like that's gonna be an awesome time and our community is really stepping up to help make it special for our students. We also have the Bearcat Pride that is donating a monetary grant in the amount of $2,500 for the Sole and Express Purpose of buying hurdles for the Monroe High School Track Team. Thank you, that's so cool. And then Bearcat Pride again is donating a monetary grant in the amount of $450 for the Sole and Express Purpose of Spring Concession payouts. So Sports Med will get 400, Track will get 25, and Library will get $25. Thank you so much to all of those who continue to partner with us to make yearbook amazing, and then PLC shirts for our staff, and just funds for other awesome things at the schools. We really appreciate you.
Thank you, Director Barnes. Moving on to public comment, and there is no public comment. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 3.01, Facility Use Fees. And this is our first reading. Director of Facilities, Adam Denny is here. Hey, Adam.
Hi. So I need to present our rates to you, or you guys need to decide rates, I guess. So I put together a couple of spreadsheets with our rates and a lot of neighboring districts. I also chose Admins. They already average with like six other districts, so they have pretty good numbers to look at, just if you're wondering why they're on there. So... Actually, do you wanna... So this is our, primarily, we're looking at our field use on this one. And the only real big changes on that one are this one Park Place Middle School Baseball Field. We had a special rate, and that was supposed to expire, I believe, a year ago. You might know more about it. And then the high school had a special rate, I don't know the story on that one. But anyway, so I put what the average is, and then kind of what I proposed based on that. That one's pretty self-explanatory. But the interior spaces, if you want to go to that one. Sorry, actually, are there any questions on that?
Adam, I have one, and it'll be, you can answer it for both as we get ahead for the interior usage as well. But basically, I think my question is, one, this is great for our community partners, especially our club sports teams, which has been a big issue we've wanted to tackle for a while. Mine is just to make sure that we're also fiscally sound to be able to do this. Is this, is it doable for us?
Yeah, and one thing that I didn't do here, and that we need to consider, is our custodial fees. We charge them, I believe, quite a bit less than they actually cost. So if they have to come in on a weekend, we charge them overtime custodial rate. So that's something you guys should look at.
And that's not built into...
That's not.
Okay.
So primarily, these rates, we assume we have a custodian on site, and we don't charge them custodial fees generally. Sometimes we do, like if it's a group that just, they make a big mess.
Okay.
They expect it, you know, we talk about it, like, yeah, we need to charge a couple hours of custodial or something like that, we do that from time to time. But generally, we're just unlocking the doors, we'll maybe set up a table, some garbage cans. Pretty simple stuff, so we don't charge them beyond this if we have a custodian already on site.
Superintendent Woodward, is that something we could put on another agenda to look at those fees as well? And just have that feature, awesome, thank you, Adam, go ahead, sorry.
And so, this one, I'm gonna just have to zoom in, excuse me, enhance the gym section, because that is primarily what I think should be adjusted. So right now, all of our gyms are the same rate per hour, and that could be Wagner Center, Frank Wagner's old gym, or the high school main gym. So my proposal down here is like the elementary school gyms, the aux gyms, we reduce those rates. Also, Sky Valley, I don't think it should be the same rate as Park Place or the high school. So I kind of propose like for their main gym, anyway, we leave that the same. And then the high school, bumping that up just a few dollars an hour, just to be a little bit more competitive. We're still below average, for the most part. Also, like Lake Stevens, they do it kind of weird, it's based on your roster. You kind of charge, they charge a fee, and then they divide it up by how many kids they charge. It's not very... Yeah, and it's hard to compare. We took into account some, like, we don't generally charge lighting fees. Sometimes we do, but generally, we don't, other districts sometimes do. So if the average doesn't seem right, it's because of kind of a correction we made there. But really, that's it. I just kind of wanted to explain why my proposals or where I came up with those numbers, because we're using all of our gyms, we've, we're using, it gets busy. We're seeing numbers that we haven't seen in years, if ever. So I want to try to, so it's hard when somebody wants a high school gym. It's like, well, you can have Frank Wagner Elementary Gym, which they've done a few times last year. So, anyway, that was it, any questions?
Thank you for putting this together. I was, I was researching a little bit, so I looked at some other school districts as well. And then I think I was looking at Snohomish, and they have it broken down into four different categories. One of those is like nonprofit, the other one is a for-profit or out-of-district. So I was curious what these price points were at. Last year, when we reduced the Park Place and the high school, it was to allow some of our local baseball programs that are primarily serving Monroe students.
Right.
That rate.
Yeah, I should get you more information. So this is in district youth sports. So we, yeah, we follow a very similar structure to that, yeah. Totally missed that.
So when you say that, you're thinking like Maltby Pony Baseball and Bearcat Football and things like that? Monroe Lacrosse?
Legends.
Select boys and girls, select.
Okay, okay, okay. And that, for us, is also our priority structure, like those, they always, Monroe students in those club sports that serve us primarily, our students always get priority usage of our facilities.
And so for, so for one of these groups, like for baseball in Monroe, they will go from $4.75 an hour to $34 an hour.
That, yeah.
Or that's the average, so it'll actually be, proposed fee is $45.
Yeah, and that was more to just kind of keep it on track with the rest of our base... Yeah.
That's per hour.
That one should probably be lower.
That's per hour.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah. We kind of base that one just based on Hidden River, because that was the only one that was normal. But given that the average was lower, that's why we kind of lowered it to 45. 45 from 50, but yeah, maybe we go down to 30, 35.
Yeah, I'm curious.
Or match it with 34.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's something to consider, only because I know that we also offer the Park Place fields. They're accessible to everyone now on the weekends. And so we want to make sure we prioritize those who have scheduled them and still honor what we have set out for our community. So I'm just curious how we would do that. And then how do custodian fees figure in for something like that?
So we'll usually have like a two-hour setup to our breakdown. Sometimes we'll be onsite, so if we have like an outdoor restroom, we'll just open and close it, open and close gates. But like if they wanted to use a gym during the weekend, we would charge them the entire time that we're there, because we can't allow them building without district staff there. We would just let them.
So we're not trying, so if they're on the fields for four hours, do we charge the four hours plus before and after for custodian fees as well?
Not necessarily, and sometimes we don't need the before and after. Usually, it's more after than before. It really varies. And if, if we just go unlock a door, we'll unlock like the bathroom doors, we'll a lot of times just leave.
Yeah.
I take that back, I think with any restrooms, we actually do stay, like more gates. Because, yeah, if there's an issue with plumbing or supplies or that kind of thing.
Okay.
A lot of, it's not a lot, like Maltby Pony Baseball, they bring in porta potties, so we just go unlock the gates, because they don't have to pay us to be there to monitor the bathrooms.
But it could cost custodian fees here, so the proposed fee is $50. And then for Park Place, it'd be another 45, so $95 an hour.
And these are my proposals, it's just, it's really up to you.
So it sounds like one of the schools we might need to adjust. If you could, since this is our first reading, come back with maybe a couple more updates on some of those that you feel like needed to be adjusted, the one that you mentioned. And then if we could do the custodial fees in the next time, because this is just the first reading, anyway, we won't have to take action tonight, that would be really helpful for us, too.
Okay. Yeah, I think it was just the baseball field, or I think it should be just lower.
And is this the structure for fees that we're looking at for both in district and out of district, or...
No, this was just in district, out of district, I wasn't really proposing much, much change.
Okay, well, can...
And I'll get all of that for you, these were just the ones that really had a big...
I, I see that it does, but, so can we get something that shows us, KDS are the fees that are being proposed for out-of-district as well as this? Because I feel like we need the full picture on that in order to be able to...
Yeah.
To pass it. And then also, I mean, can we break it down into that other level for, you know, more that are nonprofits? I mean, is there anything that we can do for, you know, places like the Boys and Girls Club or whatnot that, you know, want to utilize that? But, I mean, $95 an hour might be a little bit on the, on the steeper side. So I just really like to kind of look at all of our options and then try to square that up budget-wise with what it's going to be costing us and see.
For sure, yeah, all, and most of those, I wasn't really proposing any changes, but I'll get all of that, and I'll do the same thing with averages, so we know where we're at.
Perfect, thank you.
Oh, we have our custodial on this one, if you go to the right. So there's our average for, oh. I'm sorry, other, other page. It's custodial. So we're at 42, the average is 49. I don't know why it should be 50. Yeah. Probably.
Oh, yeah, just one thing that you might find interesting, or kind of a worthy activity for us. I've been in districts that have taken a look at the total amount of money that you, we bring in from all these fees. What are we actually bringing in on a yearly basis? And then it's hard, what's hard to cost out is what are we really paying out? And most of what you're paying out is just wear and tear. But I've been in districts that have determined that, oh, we brought in $147,000 in fees, and then the board had a good conversation about cost benefit and levies, and do we want to consider no fees? It's, it's, it's not unheard of for boards to do that for teams that, you know, 90% plus are students that reside within that district. But obviously, you can't really make that decision without knowing, what, how much fees are we bringing in right now? But that's something that I think we could probably come up with, that might be a good part of the discussion.
Do we have a revenue general ledger item that Brenna could pull that number easily for our fiscal year?
Um, I, I don't know, actually, we should.
Yeah, we, we've looked into it before, we can come up with some numbers on that. We just kind of do a proposal for the rest of this year.
Because we're probably pretty close to being done with that anyway, since fiscal year's pretty much done, and we can probably look at that as well. It's not something we need to make a decision right now on, but I'm just thinking that could help with part of it, because we pretty much can look at our 23, 24 numbers and say, what was our year-to-date so far?
Yeah, exactly, it's, it's a worthy conversation. I've been in districts that were larger than this, and our board took a look at what we were really bringing in. At the end of the day, they said, do we really want to do this or not? I'm not proposing that that's what you do or anything like that, I just say it's an important part of the equation.
And I think part of the custodial fee of why I went with 50 was based on what our custodians actually make, wages and benefits. I think we're actually, that still might be a little bit of a loss. But I can look into that as well. Any other question? All right, so I'll get you that information, I'll get you breakdowns like this for our other group or our other classifications, whatever we call them. See you guys next time.
Sean, is this gonna be on our next board meeting, or is this gonna be?
Yes.
So this will be our first August meeting? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 3.02, Freyland's PTA Grant Donation Agreement. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors accepts and approves the donation received from the Freyland's PTA.
Is there a second?
Second, there's a motion and a second, that the Monroe School District Board of Directors accepts, approves the donation received from the Freyland's PTA discussion.
I just think it's awesome, I know that when we have over a certain dollar amount, we, we have it in the business, but just it says that the Freyland's PTA hereby donates the Monroe School District Monetary Grant in the amount of $10,000. Just let that sit for a minute. Thank you, families, Freyland's families, that is insanely amazing, generous. I know that they work really hard for the Sole and Express Purpose of the attached list of service items. So they're doing this, 3,000 of it is for outside recess, new recess equipment, shorter basketball hoop, paint playground, sensory items, subscriptions, $3,000 for that. $10 per student to purchase Time for Kids, Time for Kids, which is a program, Scholastic News, Raz Kids, which our students have used before, which is amazing, or Zern. And then $1,000 for art supplies, used for materials to be purchased for this new specialist art class, and then sensory items, room, $3,000 for wiggle seats, headphones, wobble seats, floor stickers, and a small trampoline. And I know that a lot of that we've seen at our Maltby sensory room, our Maltby Elementary sensory room as well. So it's cool to see that Freyland's is gonna be able to do that as well. Thank you so much, Freyland's families, that is very generous, very generous.
Okay. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed four to zero. Agenda Item 3.03, consideration of revisions to policy 4060, distribution of materials. This is our first reading. And we have Director, right, Director of Communications, Erin Ziccarda.
Hello.
Hello. So Policy 4060 pertains to distributing information about events and programs to our families on behalf of community organizations. As you can imagine, we get a lot of requests from other organizations wanting us to distribute their flyers to our families. So it's really important that we have a clear policy and procedure on what we will and will not distribute on behalf of other organizations. The recommended changes are the WAZA recommendations, which include adding language that reserves the district's right to cease providing any information that impedes or detracts from the district's educational purpose or program. The current policy says that we will distribute information on behalf of nonprofit organizations only. The recommendations would add government entities to that. And then it would shift the method of delivery from a physical delivery of printed flyers to electronic distribution. Currently, we have a policy with no accompanying procedure. The current policy includes all of the procedures within it, and WAZA recommends moving all of the procedural pieces out of the policy and into an accompanying procedure. And they've also provided a model procedure, which I think you have in front of you. So there's a lot of things that look like they're being taken out of the policy. We're not getting rid of those, we're just moving those over into a procedure. And doing this would allow us that when we need to make changes as necessary, we wouldn't need to update the entire policy and bring that to the board for approval. So it's pretty straightforward. Any questions about that?
Do we charge for it?
Do we charge for, for the community organizations? It depends on what they're wanting to distribute. So we use Peachjar, which is a software platform to distribute information. They allow, if it's a free event, if it's free, we distribute it for free. So if they're promoting a free event or anything for our students, then it's free distribution. If it's something that they're charging for, there are, it's a $25 per school fee. So if they're earning money, then Peachjar charges them for that.
Okay. And then it says here, this disclaimer that says Monroe School District has not reviewed the materials? I assume it is reviewed.
Meaning, we review what's on the flyer, but we don't review what program, what they're offering it.
I see, okay. Thank you.
So one of the things I was looking at, and I had a question, and thank you for sharing this with me, because that was one of my questions that I had for Superintendent Woodward, was about, you know, so many things that were taken out. I think one of the things that, you know, like that WAZA gives us a lot of final policy, but one of the things I was a little concerned about was, I don't feel comfortable taking the, what we will not distribute out of the policy, I kind of like leaving that in the policy. And I do like the addition to the procedure that's in there as well, which is Item H, that says that we wouldn't, also, all the things that are in there, and then also says we won't support or oppose political candidate or ballot measure, because we don't get into the political sphere of that. And I like that addition as well, but I, I just, this is my personal view on this, is that I like the idea of leaving that, we will not. So the things that the district or the school will not distribute materials that, and this isn't our, would be proposed to be in our procedure, or obscene, lewd, vulgar, rebellious, contain intimidating, demeaning language that harasses basically protected classes, so race, religion, color, nationality, ancestry, sex, gender, all that kind of stuff, ability, and then promote commercial enterprises, promote violating existing laws, obviously, proselytize or disparage religious beliefs, or solicited funds, direct sales, information, and then the other one is the political thing. That language is currently in our policy. And I like the idea of leaving that in the policy portion, they're still having more in the procedure, but the, this is what we will do, this is what we'll not do in the policy section. The other part of it is that, that always goes through the board portion of that. So that was a thought that I wanted to put before you guys, but I'm just one of five, so.
The reason you would want to have that piece in procedure is that one you just pointed to, that we will not distribute information that supports or opposes a political measure or candidate, is actually something I just added in there this week, because we had another organization in our community ask me to distribute a flyer that supported a political candidate. And we did not have that in there. And to add that in there, I can just be as a leadership team and add that in there to our procedure, whereas if it was policy, it'd have to go to the board for multiple readings before it's approved.
Okay.
So it'd be easier, as things come to me, and I'm like, oh, that's not covered in our procedure, we can add those things in, what we won't approve to distribute, if that makes sense.
But isn't the opposite true? Not saying you would do this, but don't we have the power then to also remove things if it's not a board policy?
Well, I, I don't, alone, it would be a leadership team or process.
First reading, any other questions for Erin?
Yeah, I guess just one minor thing, it says, you know, just submit to the Director of Communications, but doesn't say how, like, do you want emails or some link or some form or...
Is that in the procedure?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's missing from the procedure, I'm saying.
Yeah, we can add that in there. We'll have to. Or we could just say, refer to our website for directions, and we can update if our process changes.
Okay, thank you, Erin.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item 3.04, CTE, it's AP Psychology Curriculum Adoption. And this is the second reading. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors adopt and approve the AP Psychology Curriculum.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, that the Monroe School District Board of Directors adopt and approve the AP Psychology Curriculum. Discussion?
A couple of years ago, we had the same conversation with, I think, the calculus curriculum, or maybe it was because it was in alignment with Everett Community College. And it was kind of the same situation where one of my questions was, is this the only AP-approved curriculum out there? Because sometimes there's multiple curriculums. And so if we're gonna stay in alignment with the college board for that, prepare the students, it kind of pigeonholes our ability with that. And so if it's, that's what they're recommending it's set up, then I think that kind of answers our question.
Discussion? Okay. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed four to zero. Agenda Item 3.05, CTE, Autodesk Fusion 360 Curriculum Adoption. This is the second reading, is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors adopt and approve the Autodesk Fusion 360 Curriculum.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, that the Monroe School District Board of Directors adopt and approve the Autodesk Fusion 360 Curriculum. Discussion? Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed four to zero. Agenda Item 3.06, Open SciEd Middle School Science Instructional Materials Adoption. And this is the second reading. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors adopt and approve the Open SciEd Middle School Science Instructional Materials.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, that the Monroe School District Board of Directors adopt and approve the Open SciEd Middle School Science Instructional Materials. Discussion?
I just wanted to follow up on the question from the last board meeting about continuing cost per year to reprint and the consumable materials, what that will, what that will look like.
And I apologize to Jennifer, she gave that to me, and I haven't given it to you yet. So sorry, Jennifer, to put you on the spot. And I apologize to Jennifer. She gave that to me, and I haven't given it to you yet. So sorry, Jennifer, to put you on the spot.
The, we estimate the presenter slash facilitator costs for training will cost about ten thousand dollars. And the reason that's an estimate is we're still waiting on the numbers from the ESD for what they're gonna start charging for this next year. Prior to this year, it has been free, but they're gonna have to start charging. It should be minimal, but we're estimating on the high end, just in case. The estimated sub-cost for the first year of training will be eighteen thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. We estimate approximately ten thousand dollars in shipping, increased enrollment, taxes, et cetera. For a total of one hundred nineteen thousand nine hundred seventy six dollars and ninety cents. That was the initial one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. For next, for the following school year, we estimate the material costs. So the material cost this year is approximately eighty one five. That that will go down to eighteen seven. That will be variable depending on how we choose to replace materials. So that's at the high end. If we go with the original publisher, if we buy all of the, if we go through all of the materials and we completely replace all consumables in the year. What we've done in the past is sometimes what we find is we use all of something, only partial of something else. So then we end up in a process where we do an inventory, and then we order the materials we need. So the cost at most will be eighteen thousand seven hundred four dollars seventy five cents for materials ongoing for the consumables. We anticipate that will go down, though, as we get better at figuring out the inventory. Presenter facilitator costs, next year, we estimate that to be six thousand dollars. We would need less training in the second year of implementation. It would go down, we estimate to three thousand the following year, and then approximately two thousand dollars ongoing. We just need to consider that we'll have new teachers every year. We may have additional training that needs to happen for the life of an implementation. And then the sub-cost, obviously, we reduce annually because we'd be reducing the number of times we've had people out of the classroom. So from eighteen thousand this first year to twelve thousand the second year, six thousand the third year, and approximately three thousand for every year after. And then the shipping costs would be, obviously, shipping, enrollment, taxes, et cetera, those kinds of fees. We estimated ten thousand this year. We would say only about three thousand the following year, and then we estimated two thousand for the annual consumable costs going forward, or if we had to add another classroom or something like that. And then, so the total this year would be one hundred and twenty thousand, and then forty thousand in the second year, twenty nine eight in the third year, and then roughly twenty five eight in the subsequent years for consumables.
And do we, Sean, Sean, Superintendent Woodward, do we have space in our budget for this? Is this all accounted for? And we're good to go? I mean, even through the subsequent years with?
Yeah, so we're, all of this is built into next school year. So you'll adopt that budget at the end of August, and then then, of course, we'll be making adjustments as needed in subsequent years as well.
Okay, all right, perfect. Thank you so much, Jen. That was a very thorough answer, and I I loved it. That was great.
No problem. And yeah, sorry, you don't have it, but you have a copy of it.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry. What do we currently pay? I missed that part. What what do we currently pay on consumables for the same?
I talked to Sherry, and she said it's really hard to pull a firm number, because as we've been piecing together the six through eight for several years, as they've been piloting, we have not replaced from a digits district standpoint, the consumable materials. She doesn't think that it's in in her estimation of her twenty years working and learning and teaching that it's a it's a costly adoption compared to what we've spent in consumables before. But she said she wouldn't be able to pull those numbers and have a firm answer for you, because the school has been purchasing some of it, and we've been purchasing some of it, and so it's hard to say.
Okay, and does that include printed materials, or this just?
Yeah, the the workbooks that we have received from the publisher, we've run those by teachers, and they felt like they were not materials that would need to be replaced every year, that they were sort of like the, if they bought one classroom set, they could make copies as needed. But that they wouldn't want to purchase ongoing sets every year.
Yeah, that sounds like a question. Can we print it ourselves?
Yeah, and some of that will be, it'll be sort of teacher dependent, because it will depend on whether or not they need to print it, and they want to cut the questions and put them in a notebook. Or do they just want to show the questions up on the screen? And this year, they've been showing a lot of that on the screen, and the student printed materials aren't any different. So we don't anticipate that we'll be buying those.
Great. And then last question, you know, this is a pretty big investment. So what are we tracking to measure that investment?
Yeah, that's a great question. First and foremost, we'll be looking at our our data on the WACAS. So we test that in fifth grade, eighth grade, and then again in eleventh grade. So we would expect to see, you know, not in the first year, you're not gonna see a huge bump, but over the next three years, and especially as we then onboard elementary, our fifth grade has been piloting at Salem Woods, the OpenSci materials. We would expect to see within the next three years, a bump in our our WACAS scores. And then obviously, we'll be getting into classrooms, we'll be seeing how it's going, we'll be taking data from teachers and students, and then as we identify those essentials and they create their common formative assessments, we'll be starting to track that data as well.
Awesome. So we can get like a board update in the air or something?
Absolutely.
Teacher feedback and everything? Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Jen. Okay, there's a motion on the table. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed four to zero. Moving on to agenda item four point zero five, approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items listed and presented in the consent agenda dated July fifteen, twenty twenty four.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items listed and presented in the consent agenda dated July fifteenth, twenty twenty four. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed four to zero. Agenda item five point zero one, it's the main event, Superintendent.
Thank you so much. That's a great intro. So we are, each meeting, I want to kind of get in the rhythm and the routine of sharing something out of our strategic plan or some behavior, some actions that we're taking that we are doing differently to get different results, because that's the whole idea behind this. There's actions that we're going to take that we expect our bottom line changes in that student learning. So with that, today, I just want to share a little bit about objective three point three of our strategic plan. We're making some strides, thanks to Shannon and Jennifer, who are both here this evening. The objective states that our comprehensive onboarding process will provide essential information, resources and training for all staff members and substitutes, ensuring a smooth and effective integration into our organization. So Shannon and Jennifer are creating an onboarding process for and professional development for our new administrators as they come on board. We have three new assistant principals. I'd also like, we'll have to remember this, to get them in front of you anytime we add a new administrator to come in, just say a few words and and say hello to you. So that's, that will be upcoming. We have Julio Chavez is coming to us from Monachi. Julio will be an AP at Park Place Middle School. We have Sarah Alvarez. She's coming to us from Lake Washington. She's an AP who will be split between Freyland's and Maltby. And then you also know, we have Jamie Johnson, who's moving from Activities Coordinator to Assistant Principal at Monroe High School. So Shannon and Jennifer are gonna really work towards an onboarding system for our new admin. It's not that it hasn't been happening before. It's just that it had happened at the building level. So we want to do a systems orientation for our new new folks. So thank you to Jennifer and Shannon for helping us to improve in this area. They are having their first meeting with our new administrators right before we meet with our entire administrative team to kick off the school year essentially. So August sixth, seventh, and eighth, our admin team will be spending eighteen hours together over three days to to kick off August and get ready for the school year and to figure out how are we gonna be implementing all of this important work. I want to share a little bit about what's on the agenda so far for those days, and as we get closer, I'll just go ahead and send you the 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 three, three days agenda, just so you can see. I think it will be encouraging to you, because you know, we won't have another board meeting for four weeks. We meet as a board and board twice a month. I want you to know there's a whole lot of work going on outside of these board meetings to further our mission and vision as a school district. So those three days, here's some of the things that we'll be working on. We'll definitely be working on strategic plan focus areas for the year and action planning. After that meeting, I'll make sure to do a presentation. I think our next board meeting is after those three meetings, I'll do a presentation on what what did that look like? Because it's our strategic plan, so that will be coming. We've done a lot of activities just related to powerful teaching and learning, and we're gonna be looking at evidence-based best practice, and we'll determine what is our focus areas for next school year. As a district, we where we can get better, better at is if we know there are practices that work, we need to get better at ensuring that we're actually utilizing those practices, and our staff know how to use those. We can support those happening in all of our classrooms. So that is some systems level work that we'll be doing at the, at a, at a, I find it a retreat in quotation marks, because I don't want you to think it's like a retreat. We're going to Hawaii or Las Vegas. We are going to index Washington. They have to drive and get there, and 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 then we're gonna meet at the Bush House. One of our teachers owns that place in the index. I don't know if you've ever been there. Kind of a free plug. Maybe we can get a discount on the daily rate for using their meeting rooms. So we hitting powerful teaching and learning. We'll be hitting the cell phone procedure, because our last big meeting was before our last board meeting, so we gotta iron out all the details for that. We'll be doing a day-to-dive. The question that we will ask our principals at that meeting is, as they are preparing to build out their school improvement plans, you've noted that you haven't seen those probably until November in the last couple of years. We need to have those things done and ready to go before school starts. So I'll be asking, did you meet your goals? What happened with your school improvement plan? What are your bright spots? What are the concern areas? And we will model that from the district level. We we have the very same things as a system that we want them to look at 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 the building level. We don't, we do not have our data back yet. Right when we get that data, I'll be making sure you get to see that as well. I will be going over the perception survey with with our administrative team that they gave me feedback on my performance. I have relative strength areas, relative growth areas. I'll be sharing with them adjustments that I'll be making to get better results myself. So that'll be something that I ask our principals to do with perception surveys with their own staff. So I'll be modeling that. We'll be doing a lot with discipline, because a lot of the, or not just discipline, I should say, behavior. Behavior management versus discipline, you know, what what are we expecting to see in our classrooms? How do we respond when students aren't behaving at the level that they should be while they're they're in school? That was one of the big concern areas from our staff and our parents. So there'll be work over the three days on that particular item. We'll be doing some professional learning community, the five-year plan work. We've got a five-year vision where we want to be in five years. We are gonna spend time figuring out how we're gonna get from where we're at. What do we need to do next year to make sure we're making adequate progress? We'll be looking at some new software that we will be utilizing for tracking harassment, intimidation, bullying issues, and those kinds of things. We'll be doing something different, and I should, we probably will have at least one principal watching this right now, and I haven't told our principals that they're gonna get to do this next year. So I apologize to, it's probably Melanie Gray. I'll see if I was right, that's watching this. We'll be doing some work on. I will be supervising and evaluating all of our principals this year. Obviously, we lost some, we made some reductions of our administrative staff at the district level. So there'll be different duties for different administrators up here. As part of that supervision and evaluation process, I'm gonna bring something new on next year around working with our principals on conducting post-teacher observation conferences. So one of the things that are required by law is we are required to give feedback to our teachers. We're required to observe them in the classrooms, right? And what, it's a requirement, because it's supposed to help teachers get better at at the jobs that they're doing. So part of a component that we're gonna utilize is they will be videotaping some of their observation conferences with their teachers with a teacher that's willing to have that recorded, and then I will be watching the videos. They will be watching the videos. They will grade how they did up against a a rubric, and then we'll compare notes. It's all about just getting getting better. And feedback is one of the most important things that that we do for our our teachers to help them get better. We will also be previewing our previewing our August days back with staff. We have three days in August and more to come at our next board meeting. And then we'll also be doing a deep dive into professional staff and student boundaries. We have a board policy. I think it's fifty two, fifty three. We we need to make sure our staff understands that policy and that we are behaving in a manner that is in alignment with that policy at all times. So that that's another piece. That's just a snapshot of some of the work that we'll be doing over those eighteen hours. It might be a little bit too much, but we'll be figuring out how to whittle that down so we get the most out of that time. So most all of that is stuff that's referenced in our in our strategic plan. So in case you thought we were just kind of chilling in July, we're just getting ready for August in July, and then in August, we'll be getting ready to open schools. So thank you very much. That's all I have.
That sounds all really great and exciting. I have a question. When do we expect to have all the TBDs completed for the, in the the plan?
Oh, when, yeah, when we get our baseline data back. So we'll, I think we'll get clean data when it comes to attendance, our learning data and all those kinds of things in August. So if we get it in August, September, we'll have another board meeting where we take a look at all of those TBDs. So we should by the first or second meeting in September, have all the data back so that we can do that. You bet.
Told you, main event. That was great. No, that was great. That's good, good stuff. It's exciting. You don't, you don't know how to take breaks, do you? Appreciate you. Okay, moving on to agenda item six point zero one, board reports and or comments, directors. Wow, it is July. I just, I'm looking forward to our board retreat. I know we've been talking about it in our weekly meetings with Director Campbell and Superintendent Woodward and myself, and so we're looking forward to getting that in the books. And thank you, Holly, for playing bingo schedule with all of the directors' schedules. We appreciate you so much. Lots, lots of fun. Yeah, I really appreciate you. Okay, it is five forty nine PM, and tonight's meeting is adjourned.